Okay, we'll go ahead and bring the city council meeting to order. I'd like to first ask everyone to stand and join in reciting the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you. Phyllis, could you please do roll call?
Great roll call.
Here.
Matt Darr.
Here.
Tyler Polinkian.
Here.
Scott Murray.
Here.
Wiley Thurgood.
Here. Was everyone given a chance to preview the minutes from the last meeting on January 3rd?
Make the motion to accept the minutes as emailed.
I'll second.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, same side. Okay. First of all, I have a couple guests here that I want to introduce or I'll let them introduce themselves. We've been having some of the students from the mayor's youth council show up to the meetings. So we have a couple of them tonight. If you guys want to introduce yourselves.
I'm Tiffany Ryan. I'm Katie. I'm Megan.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you guys for coming tonight. Looks like we have a few other guests here tonight, too. We're going to go ahead and do a resolution at the beginning. I will have to suspend the meeting and let Matt take over and take off. I have a senior tonight and it's senior night at wrestling, but I did not want to miss this. So I'm going to go ahead and get this done and then I'll suspend it and let Matt take over for the rest of the meeting.
Okay. Can I introduce you to everyone?
Yeah. So as many of you guys know, we have a very special person that's going to retire next month. Jim has been a great friend, a great employee to the city. He's done a lot of great things for the fire department. It's always on his mind to keep people safe and especially keep kids safe. We all know how much time and effort he's put into the smoke detector program. He is the legs behind that. And there are so many more smoke detectors in this city because of Jim. I think you guys can attest to your runs going down over the last however many years, and a lot of that is from having more and more smoke detectors and new batteries in these smoke detectors in all the houses. So Jim, thanks a lot for that. Another thing Jim works on is the youth, I think it's called the Fire Starter Program. Probably not always fun. It's for the youth that have issues with starting fires. And Jim's the perfect face to put in front of them to help talk to them about it. So Jim, we thank you for your work. We thank you for everything you do. You can see by the people that showed up, looks like this is probably better attendance than you have in normal meetings, so we appreciate it. So we have a resolution. This will be 2023-1. It's the first resolution of the year.
So I would entertain a motion to introduce Resolution 2023-1.
I'll make a motion to introduce Resolution 2023-1.
Second. Jim, do you mind coming up here to the table?
Right out of retirement, Jim.
Those guys weren't having all out roast, but I said we might have decided we wouldn't do it.
There's a motion and a second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.
All right. Resolution 2023-1, a resolution of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which recognizes James Spank Hitchcock for his years of public service as assistant chief of the Decatur Fire Department. Whereas, James Spank Hitchcock, excuse me, has announced his retirement as assistant chief of the Decatur Fire Department effective in the month of January 2023 after nearly 40 years of service with the Adams County Fire Department. And whereas James, recognized as a little rascal from an early age, is affectionately known by family, friends, and the community as Spank. And whereas, Spank joined the Decatur Volunteer Fire Department as a volunteer firefighter in 1983 and served his treasure until 1987. And whereas, James began his longstanding career with the Decatur Fire Department in February 1987 as a full-time firefighter and engineer, easily earning the respect of his fellow firefighters. And whereas, in 1990, James was promoted to captain of investigation, where he acted with attention to detail in his investigations and competently served in that capacity until 1994. And whereas, in 1994, James was promoted to assistant chief of the Decatur Fire Department, a position he has proudly and faithfully served for nearly 30 years. And whereas, Spank quickly became a valued member of the team, who was always responsive, prepared, and well-equipped, and was even known to have an extra pair of stockings hanging around on occasion. And whereas, in 1998, in addition to his service to the Decatur Fire Department, Spank began Hitchcock Concrete and successfully owned and operated his business through 2021 and during that time provided a valuable service to residents and businesses throughout the community, along with pouring miles of sidewalks within the city to improve the safety of pedestrians. And whereas, James's sense of duty and desire to protect the members of his department and the safety of the public as a whole meant that when the alarm came in, he was there, willingly accepting the personal sacrifice of missing holidays, family events, and special occasions in order to protect and serve the citizens of Decatur. And whereas, during the 2003 flood, Spank's dedication to his community meant working tirelessly for days at a time to fill sandbags, protect against flooding, guard against potential fires, and provide a continuous patrol of the community to be on the ready for any situation that arose during that time. And whereas, Spank has been known for his good nature and humor. Especially when a five-gallon bucket of golf balls, to be used for a ball drop at an annual Decatur Chamber of Commerce golf outing, unknowingly tipped over in the department ladder truck he was driving and discovered only upon opening the door to hundreds of golf balls rolling out and bouncing across the golf course parking lot in full view of fellow firefighters and outing participants. And whereas, James's leadership has assisted in shaping the department into an effective, skilled, and cohesive unit, which will serve as a lasting legacy of his influence within the department. And whereas, Spank's dedication and service extends beyond that of the Decatur Fire Department to his volunteer efforts, serving on the St. Joseph Catholic Cemetery Board for several years and donating his time to poor footers for headstones to help families honor loved ones. And whereas, James has a desire and willingness to serve at the drop of a hat for any matter arising at St. Joseph's School and was instrumental in the excavation, installation, and completion of St. Joseph's Playground. And whereas, James Spank Hitchcock is a loving husband to his wife Rita of 36 years, a proud father and grandfather of his three daughters and six grandchildren, who upon retiring anticipates a celebratory cruise with Rita and many years of a happy and healthy retirement spent with family. And whereas, the Decatur Common Council now wishes to acknowledge James Hitchcock's service to our community and wishes to express its gratitude for his contributions to the city. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana as follows. Resolved, the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana finds that during his years of public service, James Spank Hitchcock has been an exemplary firefighter and assistant chief of the Decatur Fire Department and has served the city of Decatur with distinction as he rose through the ranks of the Decatur Fire Department. Resolved, the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana finds that the citizens of Decatur are indebted to James Spank Hitchcock for his dedicated service as a firefighter and for his willingness over the years to put his life at risk to protect others. Resolved, the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana finds that James Spank Hitchcock worked diligently and effectively to protect the safety of the general public and of his fellow firefighters by eliminating fire hazards throughout the city, which undoubtedly prevented serious fires and which surely prevented serious injuries, saved lives, property, and livelihoods. Resolved, the members of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana hereby express their deepest gratitude to James Spank Hitchcock for his concern for public safety, for his leadership and service within the Decatur Fire Department, and for his efforts to help maintain and improve the capabilities of all within the department. Resolved, the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana hereby expresses its sincere best wishes to James Spank Hitchcock as he retires. Hereby spreads this resolution among the records of the common council and hereby directs that a copy be delivered to James Spank Hitchcock in appreciation and recognition of his outstanding public service as a member of the Decatur Fire Department. Thank you very much. And it's duly passed, adopted, and resolved by the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana on the 17th day of January 2023.
I'd like to make a motion to pass Resolution 2023-1. And I'll second it.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side. Okay. So we'll all come in.
I want to present Jim O'Keefe, the city's hard-working, just making the city a much safer place every day for all of us.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Take it over.
Actually, the last drop, 2-2 of 23. I'll take my wife and family for everything that I don't deserve. I can do my job and there's what it is, a team effort. That's not just I do my job.
Thanks, Jim. Okay, I'm being tested. I need a hurry. I'll take a motion to suspend the meeting.
So I'll move. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same side.
Put me down. Congratulations, Dan. These are our copies. So I just wanted to make sure that Spank's memorial one got signed.
Have fun. He watched my dad's property, because he just lived down the road from my dad. Anytime there was a car, he would taxi me to the point where, "Jim, it's me." Appreciate you, Jim.
Can you give that back to Matt?
I've never been to a party, but Matt and I are left here.
He's not leaving, is he?
You haven't?
Yeah, I'm really excited.
Is that too low, Phil? I think it's only, anyway, it's happening.
You sure you got it?
That looks good.
Okay. You did a great job on that. I can't take full credit, a lot of it, like the... Yeah, my god, my god. It was perfectly beautiful. I'm just going to hold that. I don't know where he went. Laura? I think he went up that way. This is his memorial copy. Mine.
Just one. Go. All right, I think we're ready.
We'll go ahead and reconvene the meeting. For our students, the mayor excused himself and is going to go play dad for his son at senior night out of the school. So we have a process where it's called mayor pro tem. In the mayor's absence, the council voted a member of the council to preside over things of this nature in the mayor's absence. So we're just going to continue on with the meeting from there. So up to our next item of business, we have our annual...
Make a motion.
Okay. Make a motion to open up council, the council meeting.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we'll go on. Our next item of business is the annual ADA review. Jeremy's going to present to us on that.
Our annual ADA compliance review that we do every year. Just a quick update is where we were last year at this title, where we're at right now. It's too cited, so your majority of the information that you're going to want to see is on the back of this page. Also, while we're getting up presenting, the only thing I will need you guys to do is make it a matter of record, so it's on our records. That's we've done this work and that's the opportunity to discuss this. So you can see on the side in 2021, actually all the way back to 2016, that we are gaining in our ADA complacency. And what this is talking about is strictly in the county caper ramps, like on sidewalks and entrances to buildings and such. There is a few that were completed at the very end of the year that's not on this list that will just be compiled into next years. So you can see what we've done, roughly about 32 ramps. A lot of that's contributed to the plant crossings program, the grant that we received last year. So we reduced the... What this is, just to remind you, is it's just like a stoplight, you're in the yellow and green. But we reduced the red, which is totally bad, from 142 to 114. The yellow, which is marginal, from 60 to 58, which brings your total grain up to 381. The target, obviously long-term, is to have red and yellow at zero, which is obviously going to take some time, but we're marching in that direction. On the front page, you can see the locations and the quantities of the ramps that we did at each location. We are responsible to do 12 or 3 intersections per year, so we're far exceeding our requirement.
One question on the yellow, when it's been 60 up until this year, does that mean it's been the same one or has... How do I want to explain it? Has there been shifts, like from red to... Can you shift from red to yellow?
Yes, due to design changes and due to, basically, guideline changes.
Okay.
Which probably next year, you're going to see yellow go away.
So under the yellow, there were changes made, it's just it happens to end up being the same number?
Correct. Correct. So basically, in theory, you're 114 and you're 58. More of a pipeline and 23 will be added together. And we'll still show the yellow, but it will be zero. The yellow is the ones that you can basically put a detection plate on, which is just altered. You know, it's closed, but it doesn't.
Mm-hmm.
Qualify, if you will. But with our paving project, our community crossing project that we're going to open up next month, just about all those will go away. So it's going to be a big year next year for the alterations. And even with some alterations, some of the guidelines are changing, so they may just go to red automatically.
So it doesn't mean the same intersections have remained yellow the whole way?
No.
All these years?
It's just been shifting, you know, a little way.
Right. Okay.
So, you know, you want to see green keep coming up and those other ones go on down.
Right. Which that's definitely happening.
You know, and I will say this and say this and say this every year, some of these get to be very difficult due to the sidewalks and the shop. But, you know, you can put a ramp in to get a handicapped person up on a ramp, but where are they going to go? You know, at some point, I don't know that we're without some other enforcement issues that we will ever get to zero. We're getting relatively close.
But that workout at Bowman, though, that has sure made a huge difference.
And that was addition to what we have last year and even prior to that.
Yeah, that's a whole kind of separate project.
It's just additional inventory.
Right.
So I just want to put a plug out here for the sidewalk. You know, we do have a wonderful sidewalk project.
Well, thank you for your work. I know that you're kind of a leader in the state with the ADA program, taking this on by yourself, and I'd like to make this a matter of record, the ADA program review. And I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay. Next, we need to make a matter of record various signed certificates and appointment to boards, being the first of the year.
Yeah. All the certificates and those of all this have been taken for Chris Cho for the BVA, Patrick Strawn for the Alcoholic Beverage Commission, Steve Hakes and Dave Schnitz for the Plant Commission, and John Craig Russent, Jason Byrne, Max Miller, Jeremy Free, and Ron Story for the Redevelopment Commission, which means it's all a matter of record.
I'll make a motion to make this a matter of record.
Steve, today at the Plant Commission, said that he was not on the Plant Commission anymore.
Well, he served that meeting.
Okay, and then he was...
So he got the sign, so then Dan will appoint someone else.
Okay.
And then we'll put...
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have, I believe, Blaze Brooks with the Police Department, going to give us an update on the health of our canine officer. Officer Brooks, thanks for coming.
Thank you. Back in June of 2022, Arco displayed some bickering of his right rear leg. He held up off the ground, wasn't putting full pressure on him, his toe tapping with it. At that time, I took him to get imaging done and opinions from three different veterinary clinics or hospitals. All three told me that he had a partially torn right cruciate ligament and cautioned me that the instability in that leg would make him overuse his left one and that typically when they see this issue, the other leg ends up blowing up completely. At that time, they also diagnosed him with cruciate ligament disease, a genetic issue. You could think about the bottom portion of your leg being rotated forward, so as your femur sits on top, it's constantly, constant pressure on the tendon in your knee trying to hold your legs together is basically what he's been dealing with. Two weeks ago, he blew his left cruciate ligament completely. When I went to get imaging done again, it showed arthritic changes in both knees. He has buildup in both knees. His right partial tear has gotten worse and there's a lot of scarring tissue there. And I've gotten recommendations from multiple veterinary clinics, again, that Arco should be retired and no longer be exposed to the hard work that he's exposed to on a daily basis now. With that, we have a two-year health and workability warranty from FMK9 where Arco came from, so there's not really a monetary challenge there for replacing Arco. The challenge really that I have is his left knee has to be surgically repaired, stay the way he is with that one. And the right one is going to need it eventually. That one's going to go completely eventually. The issue is that if I send him back to the kennel, where he came from, the kennel has no use for him. They won't pay to fix him, and they'll send him back to Europe. And in Europe, they have absolutely no use for him. So I refuse to do that, and I've agreed to take him on and keep him, adopt him from the kennel after the warranty is claimed will sign with me. What I guess what I kind of would like to ask for, what I think we need, is that I have two different quotes here to repair his left knee. One is from Red Barn here in Decatur, and that quote, the total estimate it charges is $2,023.90. The second quote that I have is from East State Veterinary Clinic in Fort Wayne. Their estimate is between $1,212.53 and $1,546.03. I know in the past, you know, we spoke about wanting to keep our business local if we can. And Dr. Riggs at Red Barn donates all of the medical attention to those of our canines and to the county's canines for that matter. So the difference in price there is she's more than covered that, I feel, in the past than everything she's donated for I Bar and Arco. You know, we have plenty of money in the canine fund to cover those things. It's just something that I need it to happen soon to be repaid. He can't, he's totally unstable. I can't work this for fund because he can't, you know, drive in the car around. So that's happened. And also, as far as going forward, everything's been approved through the kennel and from Europe as far as his warranty being claimed, and it's proven as a genetic issue. The Allen County Sheriff's Department is taking their next group of guys on February 21st to choose new dogs, with a new, from a new group of dogs that's coming on February 18th. After that, the new academy class starts up on March 15th. And it's our intention for me to choose a new dog on the 21st and then start the new academy class with my new dog on the 6th, so we can get our canine back on the road as soon as possible. And that class is 15 weeks, so the estimated graduation is June 16th, 2023. There are a few other things that I guess is a question as far as is any liability concerned for the city. I haven't completely made up my mind yet about, I'm keeping Arco for the time being to get him back to health. There's a couple of programs out there, one of them that I've been in contact with is Project Zero Canine. They take retired police and military canines and they adopt them out to retired military and law enforcement members as pets. It's hard to, these are really hunchbacks of dogs, and it's going to be hard for me. I have also another mount at home. I have a female mount and I have Arco, and now I'm going to go and get another dog. I don't know where you guys see the liability standpoint is, but I already use the program like Project Zero Canine to find them to get home through them. If I'm unable to, it works at my home to keep them. I just wanted to bring that to you guys. It's just something that it, I need it to happen soon to be the pain. He can't, he's totally unstable. I can't work this for fun because he can't, you know, drive in the car around. That's happened. And also as far as going forward, everything's been approved through the kennel and from Europe as far as his warranty being claimed and it's proven as a genetic issue. The Allen County Sheriff's Department is taking their next group of guys on February 21st to choose new dogs. With a new, from a new group of dogs is coming on February 18th. After that, the new academy class starts on March 1st. And it's our intention for me to choose a new dog on the 21st and then start the new academy class with my new dog on the, on the 6th. So we can get our K-9 back on the road as soon as possible. And that class is 15 weeks, so the estimated graduation is June 16th, 2023. There are a few, few other things that I guess is a question as far as is any liability concern for the city. I haven't completely made up my mind yet about, I'm keeping Arco for the time being to get him back to health. There's a couple of programs out there, one of them that I've been in contact with is Project Hero K-9. They take retired police and military canines and they, they adopt them out to retired military and law enforcement members as pets. It's hard to, these are really hunchbacks dogs and it's going to be hard for me. I have also another mount at home. I have a female mount and I have Arco and now I'm going to go and get another dog. I don't know where we're at where you guys see the liability standpoint is. If I already use a program like Project Hero K-9 to find them again, to get home through them. If I'm unable to work at my home to keep them. I just wanted to bring that to your guys' attention because I, I'm not going to allow him to be adopted by any civilians. To be, you know, elderly or military, only to have experience with dogs through that program. I'm just not sure where, how that liability falls on us because of the training he does have. And you know, if, if that's not an option, then I'll just keep him. But I just, it's going to be a struggle for me to show the attention to that three dogs of that high drive.
So this program would take Arco, but we pay for his services there?
No. So the agreement that I have to sign with K-9 is theoretically, once, once I trade, once I claim this warranty and trade Arco for my new dog, Arco would be reclaimed by the kennel and then they would sign him into my name.
So I think at that point, we would, the city would be completely, lose all liability for the dog. The dog would, at that point, would be your dog after that.
That's what I assumed, but I didn't want to, you know, move forward with anything on that. So at least advising you guys of what, you know, asking to make sure.
Is your initial request to use K-9 funds to pay for his surgery?
The initial surgery, yes, because the, the damage that happened to him was a thing, you know, while we were at work, we were training when this one happened. I'm going forward, if I, you know, ultimately keep Arco, then I would be accepting all responsibility for that other leg that would, is going to be repaired. And then I also have to neuter him because I signed an agreement with FMK9 that he won't be used for breeding or any sort of profit for me to keep him. So I'll be, yeah, that's my initial.
It would, it would be best to break it down into pieces.
So initially, council could consider whether approving use of Arco's K-9 fund to pay for his work-related, essentially work-related injury and to make sure that he's not suffering and continually in pain.
Just one more thing that is probably important because when you think about like the time that I have invested away from the city and stuff and being at training, some of the reasons why he can't work anymore is the genetic issue I explained to you. Also, there's two different types of surgeries to repair these cruciate ligaments. One is like what you would normally do for your pet. It's much cheaper. They just take the, take the ligament, reattach it, and if they're not working too hard, they'll be fine. It'll, it'll stay. The other type is called a TPLO surgery where they carve out part of the bone and turn it around to fix that forward rotation. So they can then begin to work again. The issue with that is that it causes bone cancer sometimes. And that surgery is $5,000 to $7,000 and then there's still the problem of the other leg. So we can't go down that road with him and expect him to work for the city. We, I mean, we potentially, you know, even if it's just the two surgery, you're talking $12,000 to $14,000. And then if there's bone cancer on top, that's, we don't have that kind of money or. So he has to be retired, so that's just how we're at.
I'd make a motion to allow you to use K-9 funds and have Red Barn do the surgeries since they already take care of all the canines. It's a little more expensive, but they're showing a commitment to our program.
I'll second that.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then the, my understanding is a secondary request would be to give you, to give you authorization to take Arco after the city has secured its warranty claim for his, for him? Is that what I, I mean, essentially?
I guess that's kind of what I'm asking.
I mean, you're, yeah.
If, if your guys' opinion is that there's no liability for the city after he's warranted and signed into my name, then I guess that's not really a question that would necessarily concern you guys going forward. But I wasn't entirely sure, so I wanted to.
And I think, and I think it's on you if you think that there's a good program out there to put this dog into.
Yeah. If it's okay, I would like an opportunity because I know that you're, you have a contract with the city with relation to Arco. And I'm, I'd like to look at that. I'd like to also see, see how Arco is, is treated essentially. And it, it sounds awful, but is it, is he considered property? Is he just considered personal property that would have to be declared surplus property? And we would have to follow a certain kind of procedure? Or whether this is a special set of circumstances where we can go ahead and act and give you authorization to do that? It seems, it seems like a no-brainer, what should happen? I just need an opportunity to investigate it a little bit more. And I, we would probably be able to come back and have a decision for you on that aspect of it by February 7th. Is that, is that?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I mean, in the meantime, I have no intentions of doing anything because he's going to need, it's going to be longer than that before they can probably get him in for this surgery.
Will that impact your warranty?
No.
That timing?
No, it will not because the warranty is two years. But I got him, we purchased him on January 31st of 2022. So we're coming up on one year.
One year.
So we've got an entire port of.
But I, even after he's essentially retired and out of service, I think it would be appropriate that council could at least authorize you to have the care and custody after the warranty. Because that's, signing the warranty claim would essentially trigger him being either turned back into the kennel or in your, be placed in your care. Is that correct?
Yeah, so the way it's been explained to me is that if you think of it as a tool or like it's something else we use, you know, for a squad car, for example. You know, if we were to take a squad car back and return it because it was, there was an issue with it, warranty issues, then like the city would no longer own that, that then, or that vehicle because we received a new one to return it within the outside. So that if you break it down to the simplest terms, that's theoretically what's happening. But there's a lot of like, a explorer isn't trained to do aggressive things. So I just, like I said, I wanted to ask about, you know, where you guys.
I think we're going to let Dan.
No, I.
I don't think I have a problem with it as long as Ian looks into it. Right. That's kind of where I'm.
Revisited.
And does that need any motion or just that you will take?
If the, if council wants to take that under consideration and address it, essentially table that issue and address it February 7th. All, I don't, I agree with Blaze on that in terms of how that should be treated. So, and that makes sense. But just to verify and just to kind of check all the different agreements that are in effect.
Right.
For that, but we should have an answer for you real, really fast. And then I think your third issue is, do you, are you requesting to go select another dog? Or that is just, that's more of a departmental issue?
I believe that's more of a departmental issue.
Okay, then yeah. I think that council has essentially dealt with kind of everything that, that you presented. Are you okay with things?
Uh, yeah, I would so.
Okay.
Blaze, if you have surgery on Arco before you essentially turn him in for the warranty, does that do anything? Or have you checked on that at all?
So all of the paperwork has been finished between myself, FMK9, and the kennels in Europe. So everything is good to go on. They've got all the paperwork from all three veterinary clinics that he's seen. They've even asked me for, the European veterinarians have asked me for videos of Arco because they've never seen this issue before in any of their dogs. So that's kind of where we're at, about as unlucky as weakness can be. Because they're asking me for videos of what it looks like because they're unfamiliar with it. So, yeah, I mean, it's, everybody is, everything's fine. It needs to be fixed. As I just said, it needs to be fixed. It's not going to affect anything going forward.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Now going to go on to department heads. Jeremy?
We've just been going around finishing up a lot of little wood stands for the fall.
Mm-hmm.
That was this one.
It's different.
We're just finishing up a lot of little wood stands and then planning our summer projects, spring summer projects and stuff. So whether it's the, you can hurt a little, hopefully it stays that way and we still get a few things done. Meeting, we talked about the C-Quick Fix app. And you guys said, I'll correct the hand and go ahead and look into that a little bit further and sign everything. Next Monday, we'll have a, have a kickoff, what meeting, the content of the morning. So we should have that app flowing within the next probably 45 days or so. Available to the public to report their concerns. So that's all we're looking for.
Okay, thank you. Kevin?
Let me imagine that sewer district, Kansas sewer district is taking over of woods, Yost Woods here in the near future, probably a few months out. So with that, we lose roughly 60 customers. And that changes our postal rate for one of our billing cycles. So we'll have to move roughly 50 to 60 from our, what we call cycle four to cycle five. Take it over to 500 limit for billing to keep our low postage rates. I narrowed that down to the Gray Goose area. They'll all be receiving letters in their next billing when this is going to change. How the steps before will be, but it is about Gray Goose, 550, a couple on 28th Street, just west of Thunderbird. Will be the area that will be switched over. But they'll be receiving notice in their next billing. It won't happen for a few months, so they have plenty of time to adjust. All that will do really essentially is they'll get the bill, five days later, it'll be due five days later. The readings are within a couple of days apart, so it shouldn't affect their billing much for that, for that switch over. That will be happening, probably most likely in March.
Okay, thank you. Tony? Kurt? Bill? Brad? Jamie? Police chief?
Nothing.
Carrie?
I do have something. I have properties working on getting your pre-treatment permit. And so I've made notes, I find a date and working with them.
I can't hear her. I have properties.
Okay. Before we go to ask, Phyllis pointed out, we do have another item we need to address. Introducing ordinance 2023-1. And Phyllis will explain what that is.
I won't, we can.
Or Ann will?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is an amendment to the code enforcement sections related to where collected fees for excessive weeds and vegetation are applied. So back in 2018, they had been in the, going to general fund. And it was amended to go to Parks and Rec because that department would mow private yards that were, that had nuisance level weeds and vegetation. So it seemed fitting to pay that department. Now that, that money comes from code enforcement and those services are contracted out through different agencies in the community that provide those services. And it comes out of building zoning and code enforcement's budget. So it really should be allocated back into the general fund to kind of be applied in that direction. So that's all that this ordinance does. It adjusts section 90, chapter 92, section 92.03, and the penalty is section 92.99 to simply restate, redirect fines into the, the various funds.
Okay. Well, then I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2022-1 on its.
Twenty, twenty-three?
I mean, 23, I'm sorry, yes. 23-1. 2023-1 on its first reading by short title only.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2023-1 and ordinance of the common counsel of the city of Decatur, which amends chapter 92 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 is supplemented for the purpose of authorizing the deposit into the general fund. All costs assessed and collected for mowing yards deemed a nuisance.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-1 on its first reading.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Roll call, vote?
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Ford, can't?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Why they serve?
Yes. I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2022, 2023-1 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. Motion is second. All in favor? Roll call?
No.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance 2023-1 and ordinance of the common counsel of the city of Decatur, which amends chapter 92 of the city Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 is supplemented for the purpose of authorizing the deposit into the general fund. All costs assessed and collected for mowing yards deemed a nuisance.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2023-1 on its second reading.
Aye. Second. Now roll call.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Ford, can't?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Why they serve?
Yes. I'll make a motion to table ordinance 2023-1 for its third reading at our next meeting on February 7th, 2023.
I'll say it.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Now refer for department heads. Anything to be brought up by members of council?
I do. We, I, the mayor, myself, and I believe maybe Craig, received an email with a general question from the public asking the minutes for these meetings. And it takes us back to where this meeting began. They were questioning, why are the minutes not on the website the next day? And part of that reasoning is we just approved the minutes tonight from the last meeting. So meeting the first and the third weeks of each month, sometimes there could be several weeks before another meeting comes about. So that was just a, an answer to that question. I want to do it publicly.
Of course, someone can always come into.
And request.
And make a request too.
They won't receive them until after they've been approved.
So once we approve them at the next council meeting, then they're official record in the city.
Right.
Loss.
And they're available through the clerk treasurer's office. And it's a courtesy to the community to post them online. So that anyone can come in during normal business hours to the clerk treasurer's office and request them.
The second part to that question that was posed to us was why is, where's the agenda? Why is there no agenda prior to the meeting? And there is an agenda. That said, sometimes it's evolving. Even at every council meeting, there's new things that come up, like the K-9 situation arise kind of last minute. So the mayor added it to his agenda on here. So sometimes it's, not that anything's being kept from the public, it's just an evolving agenda. And just like now, I ask can new things, anything new to be brought up from the council? And now's the time to bring those things up. So it is addressed and then it is put into the minutes and then it is approved in that next meeting. So it's just a more procedural process on how that happens. So if you'd like to see anything pertaining minutes, they are published or see the clerk treasurer's office. If you'd like to be added to the agenda or wish to see the agenda, it's the mayor's agenda. So see him before any council meeting.
And the, on the topic of an agenda, there's a, an effort that's made to try and collect as many agenda items in advance as possible. The only requirement that council has is to actually publicize notice of the time and place of a, of a meeting. So we make, we, we make an effort to get an agenda out there and posted. But sometimes it, there's ebbs and flows. Things get added and taken off. And not an absolute requirement, but we try and be as. as transparent with topics being discussed as possible.
Fair, okay. If nothing else from council, Anne, anything additionally? Anything additional? Public, we have some students. Any questions or concerns? We have some public in attendance. Anything else? Okay.
I'd like to say something, if you don't mind. The Adams County Community Foundation funded a project that we applied for a grant for. It's going on over here on the west end of the water company, if you guys have driven by that and seen it as you go to school. We're putting up a pavilion for the Fourth of July festivities to where we can keep it. Last year, we had a band that got wet when it kind of sprinkled and showered during the day. We've had some local contractors or building supply people donate the materials. We applied for a grant through the Adams County Community Foundation, and then we got the Belmont Trades Group to, they're putting it up. So they've been working on it about a week. I drove out there, took some pictures. I know the mayor stopped by. Their classroom, they have classes that do it during the day, between eight and 11. If you have chance, stop by, that's the first class, and then in the afternoon, they have one, two, and I think they get done about three. I stopped in there, took a couple pictures of them today, but if you get a chance, encourage them. You know, we're trying to work on our local trades. They're doing something good for our community, on a city building for the betterment of all. So I just thought I'd bring that up and thank the hunter, who's the building and trades teacher. He took the project on, and it's really, it's going well, and we'll see how it goes here in the next week or two, but it should be nice.
Great. Okay, we're, two claims, we had a pile of them this week.
I'll make a motion to pay the claims.
I'll second.
Motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?